If you have questions or comments for Northwest Public Radio, you can send us an email, write to NWPR@WSU.edu. It's seven o'clock. Northwest Public Radio, KRFA 91.7 Moscow Pullman, KNWV 90.5 Clarkston-Lewiston, and KNWO 90.1 Cottonwood-Greengill, a community service of the Edward R. Murrow College of Communication at Washington State University, online at NWPR.org.
Tonight is March the 3rd, and this is a regular Moscow City Council meeting. Welcome for everybody that's here, and we will start with the Pledge of Allegiance. Dan Carstalian will lead us, please. All stand.
Next on the agenda is a proclamation that I will be reading. It's an Arbor Day proclamation. Whereas in 1872 Julius Sterling Morton, who became Secretary of Agriculture under President Grover Cleveland, proposed to the Nebraska Board of Agriculture that a special day be set aside for planting trees, and whereas the resulting holiday Arbor Day was first observed in that state with the planting of more than one million trees, and whereas Arbor Day is now recognized throughout the nation and the world, reminding us that one person's initiative can make a lasting and meaningful difference, and whereas the city of Moscow and the Moscow Tree Commission are committed to a community forestry program that supports a safe, healthy, and attractive urban forest, and whereas trees are a renewable resource that yields fruit, nuts, or food for profit, wood for construction, fuel for warmth, paper products, and a whole wide variety of other goods and materials, and whereas when properly selected, planted in the right places, and tended appropriately, trees increase property values, add beauty, enhance economic vitality of business districts, cut heating and cooling costs, and provide buffers from traffic, and whereas trees intercept stormwater, reduce runoff and erosion, clean air and water, produce oxygen, slow climate change by absorbing carbon dioxide, provide habitat for wildlife, and moderate air temperature, and whereas a healthy urban forest can bring a sense of vibrancy of respite, adventure, or calm, escape or contentment, and connection to wild nature amidst asphalt and concrete, and whereas Arbor Day reminds us of the timeless observation by its founder, J. Sterling Morton, that each generation takes the earth as trustees. Now therefore, I, Bill Lambert, Mayor of the City of Moscow, do hereby proclaim April 25th, 2014 as Arbor Day in the city of Moscow, and I urge all citizens to support the planting of trees and to promote the well-being of this and future generations. Thank you. Okay, folks, the next thing on the agenda is the Consent Agenda.
Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve the Consent Agenda.
Okay.
I'll second.
Wayne made the motion to approve it. John Weber, second. I'll start with the call from Art. Aye.
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 Opposed to be none, so we will move on to the next item, which is Mayor Appointments. There it is. Here we go. Okay, folks, we've got five people, and if you're here this evening, if I call your name, please stand up for just a minute so folks can recognize who you are. These are appointments for various commissions. The first one is Jeffrey Dodge Fair and Affordable Housing Commission. Jeffrey, very good. Linda Heath Farmers Market Commission, the craft vendor position. Robin Lopez Moscow Arts and Commission. Archibald Harner Parks and Recreation Commission. And Bob Sanders Transportation Commission. Thank you, Bob. Thank you, Jeffrey, and Bob, for being with us. Now...
Make the motion to approve all appointments.
I second it.
Okay, with Wayne's motion and Art's second, we will start the roll with John.
Aye.
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 So you're unanimously, thank you very much, for those that are willing to serve these fine commissions, thank you very much. Okay, and the next will be public comment and response time, limited to 15 minutes. If somebody would like to get up and speak, please come on up, state your name, and you'll have three minutes to present.
Victoria Seaver, 121 North Lily, Moscow. I'm speaking about the proposed letter that you tabled last time regarding Moscow's nondiscrimination ordinance in regards to the Luker Bills. First, let me reiterate a resounding thank you for passing the ordinance in 2013. Second, I attended the Admin Committee meeting, which stated general support for the letter with some revisions, which was diligently worked on, and then brought to the council at the last meeting. So thank you for your combined efforts in laying out the content of the letter. Third, I want to publicly thank council members Dan Carstalian, Art Bedekey, and Tom Lamar for attempting to amend the premature motion to table the letter in order to have the language ready for immediate use if needed. To continue, I and others who emailed you, some of whom emailed you like I did ahead of time, believe the letter should have been sent, but I can see a position where some would prefer to table the letter because you don't want to wave a red flag in the face of the legislature, okay? But you should still prepare the letter ahead of time because you may not have enough time to deal with it by a special meeting, and why have to go to a special meeting when you had the letter in your hands to deal with already? The Luker Bills are tabled at present, however, they could reappear at any time, so could another version from another congressman. I was here when city, then city attorney Randy Fife, studied other city ordinances addressing this kind of discrimination, and how he very carefully crafted our city ordinance to use mediation and education to bring all parties to a mutual outcome, if possible, rather than to entrench negative reactions. Discrimination is rooted in fear. Fear from something you think is bad that will overpower you, or what you think is good, fear that you will be judged weak or badly for not tromping it. We move beyond fear or discrimination when we can come to a point of basic understanding when we no longer react out of fear that something different might threaten us or our fundamental beliefs, when we learn it doesn't. That is a way to social growth in the world, and certainly on the home turf of our communities. As the city council, you are leaders in this process for human rights, social growth, and the resultant economic outcomes, all these things together. I tend to be cautious, and in some instances, I also think it may be wiser not to wave a flag, a red flag, at the bull, but other times, I think the bull needs to see your flag, not a flag of attack, but a wave that says, hey, hold on bully boy, calmer heads need to be heard, there are lines that cannot be crossed, and we are here for the betterment of everyone, non-exclusively. That's why I think the letter should have been sent, and is likely to resurface when that bull starts pawing up the turf again. So I urge you to ensure that you fully do your part, as you have so far, in protecting this city ordinance and what it constitutes for our citizens. Thank you.
Thank you, Victoria. Would others like to come up and speak before we move on? Seeing no others, thank you very much. We'll move on to the next item. Item number four, Chief Duke Post Recognition Report, presented by Gary Reener.
Thank you, Your Honor. As you know, we have a designated time for employer recognition, and today, we're pleased to have a special presentation for Chief David Duke for achieving an additional certificate from the Police Officer Standards and Training Council. So we have William L. Fink, the Post Division Administrator, here to give that presentation.
Good evening, Mayor Lambert and Council. My name's William Fink. I'm the Administrator of Peace Officer Standards and Training. I'm here representing the Governor's Council on Peace Officer Standards and Training and Chairman Gary Rainey. We're here to award Chief Duke with the highest award of the Post Council. It is the Executive Certificate Award. It's an award that not many administrators in the state, that being chiefs of police and sheriffs in the state, have attained, and the number dwindles as they keep retiring. But it's an award for service, and it's an award for education and training standards, reaching a pinnacle in the type of training that we produce, that we hope that administrators will try and attain, and to encourage others in their subordinate lines to also wish to attain these certificates over time. Chief Duke's 40 years of service into law enforcement in both the state of Oklahoma and Idaho are commendable. He sits currently on the Idaho Internet Crimes Against Children Policy Board and the Association of Cities Drug Task Force Executive Committee. He serves also in his training as a member of the FBI National Academy, which is commendable by itself. Three years passed very quickly for Chief Duke and myself, because when I came onto this Peace Officer Standards and Training Board, your chief at that time, Dan Weaver, was my chairman, and it just seems that time passes so swiftly, and Chief Duke has attained the minimum time period as an administrator, three years, which is required for this certificate, and hundreds of hours of training in his background, which is also one of the requirements. He has been one of those leaders who have been encouraging his subordinates to also receive certificates, as he has, and Chief Duke, over the time, has attained the post basic, the intermediate, the advanced, and the management certifications. So tonight, I'm here to award the executive certificate, again, the highest certificate issued by Post. Chief Duke, you are one of the people who have made law enforcement what it is today in the state of Idaho, and we salute you for your dedication and wish you continued success in your law enforcement career, and if you would come forward, please. This is the executive certificate, and Chief Duke, I'm pleased to award it to you, and I hope you hang it someplace nice in your office so your subordinate officers will have something that they might want to attain someday in the future.
Thank you very much. You're very, very welcome. Mr. Frank.
As my boss always says, I'm a man of few words, so I'll stick it that way. I just want to thank the director for coming all the way up from Boise in this weather to present this to me, but I wouldn't be here if it wasn't for those present here, because from my office chair, my responsibilities hinge on the capabilities of my support and the staff that go out and protect and serve every day and serve this community, so I thank them, but my biggest thanks goes to the reason I'm here today, and that's my wife, Jean. She's the one that sacrifices day in and day out, so I can't say enough for the support she's given me over the last 35 years, or by 40 years of law enforcement, so I thank her also.
Chief Duke, don't leave yet. Don't leave. The reason you have such a support team back there, Dave, is because everybody respects what you do in this community and what you've done. You've been a big portion of this community, you've been a big portion of some of the officers' training, and a number of folks in this whole building, in this whole city, very much respect you, so thank you very much for your service, David. I'm not surprised at all by this, incidentally.
Well, I'll pay 'em back for coming here and embarrassing me.
Okay, we're going to move on to item number five, which is the appeal of 318 South Howard Street Conditional Use Permit. And Becky, are you here? Before you do your presentation, John, I want to let John make a quick announcement here.
Oh, yeah. Excuse me, I've got a cold, but I have driven by this property since it's near my house, and so not necessarily do inspect it, but, oh, there it is. That's one thing. And the other is that I got an email from one of our citizens, and I had no idea why I got this email, because this particular process started before I got on the council. And anyway, in reading part of the email, I realized that this was something that was going to come in front of the city council. So at that point, I stopped reading the email, deleted the email, but feel that I should bring forward the fact that there was a small amount of communication unbeknownst to me when I started reading it, and I don't think it'll have any effect on how I vote. And to tell you the truth, if anybody here would prefer I sit down, I would be more than willing, but if you're fine with it, I'm fine with it.
John, I'm going to refer to our attorney Rod and city manager Gary.
He disclosed that he had an email, a communication. He said that he stopped reading it when he kind of realized that it was something that was coming up. I think that was the appropriate thing to do, and he disclosed it, and he said he wouldn't have any, you know, any bias on the matter.
As long as there's no conflict of interest, as long as the council member indicates that he can sit, he or she can sit and not let it influence their decision, then that's be appropriate.
Okay, thank you.
I'm in the same position as John. I got an email, quite frankly, I don't remember what position, if any, it took. I just glanced through it and said, we'll look at the matter when it comes. I also have driven by the property.
Art?
Yeah, I got the same email and referred the sender over to Bill Belknap for further information.
Well, heck, I feel left out.
I think we've had full disclosure evidently.
I didn't get it.
Wayne and Dan didn't read your email, I guess.
Actually, I probably just recognized that it was going to be a conflict of interest and probably just deleted it immediately.
Okay, very good. We'll move on, then. Becky, would you like to do the presentation on this, please?
All right, thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. Before you tonight is an appeal of a conditional use permit decision for a parcel at 318 South Howard Street. The owner of the subject property made initial contact with the Community Development Department with draft plans for a new accessory structure. The structure was proposed to have a two-car garage with an office space on the ground floor and a two-bedroom living space on the second floor. The applicant initially described the intended use of the living space as a place for family and friends to stay with no mention of the desire to rent the space. The applicant was advised by staff that a kitchen would not be allowed, as this would create a second dwelling on the property. The applicant then pursued a conditional use permit for a guest house. The applicant was issued a building permit for the accessory structure so that he could begin construction on the garage, and the plans indicated storage space on the second floor. During the submission of the conditional use permit application and over discussions with the applicant, I was informed of the applicant's intent to rent the space out to generate extra income. I did not take issue with this information because the definition of a guest house does not specifically prohibit the use of compensation, however, this was a misinterpretation of the code on my part, as historical interpretation of the guest house has been for overnight guest accommodations without compensation. Therefore, the application was brought before the Board of Adjustment, where the property owner proposed to construct and use the second floor of an accessory structure as a guest house. The guest house consisted of two bedrooms, one bathroom, a living room, a dining, and a great room. The applicant noted on the application that the proposed use would provide a public benefit of lodging. The proposed accessory structure included a double garage for use by the principal structure and one parking space to be added to the south of the accessory structure for use by the guests. The property is located at 318 South Howard Street, and highlighted here in red. Here's just a closer look at the property. The subject property is located within the moderate-density single-family residential zone R2, where accessory living quarters serving as a guest house or domestic servant quarters are permitted via a conditional use permit. This is the proposed floor plan for the guest house that was submitted by the applicant, and as I indicated earlier, there was two bedrooms, one bath, a living, and a dining/great The subject property is a 6,250-square-foot parcel with an existing single-family dwelling. The property is accessed via South Howard Street with rear access via the Howard Monroe Alley. Howard Street's a 30-foot-wide local residential street with curb, gutter, and sidewalk on both sides, and the alley is 20 feet in width. The majority of adjacent properties are similarly situated with single-family dwellings and garages in the rear accessed via the alley. There are a multifamily used to the south and a duplex on a parcel to the northeast. Properties across Howard Street are in the R4 zone and include the American Legion Cabin and Frontier Communications Building. All other uses are residential in character. Here's some photos of the alley behind the subject property. The proposed structure is actually proposed to be located just to the south of this existing white structure there. This is the subject property here, where the tarp is laid, is where the proposed structure is now being built, and this is an existing garage, just to show an existing double-car garage that's accessed from the alley. Relating this application to the comprehensive plan, Chapter Two, Land Use and Community Character, designates the subject property as neighborhood conservation. Neighborhood conservation areas are intended to preserve the character of existing residential neighborhoods, and an objective of Chapter Two is to protect existing neighborhood identity and character by preventing unintended impacts to establish neighborhoods with cohesive character and community identity, and utilizing neighborhood conservation designations to protect and promote the existing neighborhood feel. The staff's recommendation to the Board of Adjustment was to conduct a public hearing and consider all testimony presented, and then approve the application for the conditional use permit for a guest house with no conditions. The testimony before the board included the applicant, who stated that his intent was to provide overnight accommodation to non-family member guests for compensation, and it was his understanding from the beginning that this was permitted with a guest house. There was one individual that spoke in favor of the proposal and appreciated that someone was taking interest in property in his area, and there was one individual that objected to the application due to potential increases in traffic through an already heavily traveled alleyway. I'm going to review the relevant criteria and standards that are utilized to base a approval or denial of a conditional use permit. The proposed use will not endanger public health or safety if located where proposed, and will not result in conditions which will generate nuisances, or any potential nuisances will be appropriately mitigated. The proposed use must meet all applicable development standards of the zoning code, including building height, setbacks, parking, use limitation, landscaping, and performance standards. The proposed use must not be injurious or detrimental to adjoining properties or the The proposed use shall be a public necessity and is justified by the applicant and deemed by the board to be of benefit to the public. The character of the proposed use, if developed according to plans submitted, shall be in harmony with the area in which it is to be located. The proposed use must not danger the public health or safety, and it must be in conflict with the comprehensive plan. The Board of Adjustment denied the application on January 23rd, 2014, based upon the applicant's testimony of the intent to rent the guest house. The Board determined the proposed use of a guest house for compensation is not authorized under the definitions of the zoning ordinance. Now I'm going to go over a few relevant definitions from the zoning code that are applicable to this application. First off, a guest house is defined as a detached structure being an accessory to a single-family dwelling with not more than two bedrooms, having no kitchen facilities, and which shall be used or designed for use primarily by guests or servants for sleeping quarters only. The zoning code does not provide a definition of a guest, so I've provided three sample definitions from three different sources. From the Oxford Dictionary, a guest is defined as a person invited to visit, have a meal, et cetera, at the expense of the inviter, or a person lodging at a hotel, boarding house, et cetera. From the Webster's Dictionary, a guest is defined as the recipient of hospitality at the home or table of another, or one to whom entertainment or hospitality has been extended, or a patron of an establishment such as a restaurant or hotel. And from dictionary.com, a guest is a person who spends some time at another person's home in some social activity, or a person who patronizes a hotel, restaurant, et cetera, for the lodging, food, or entertainment it provides. Some other definitions from the zoning code that provide a lodging-type use include a bed and breakfast, which is a building occupied by its owner in which lodging and breakfast or meals are provided for not more than six roomers for compensation on less than a weekly basis, and a boarding house, which is a building occupied by its owner in which not more than six roomers, lodgers, and/or boarders are housed or fed for compensation on a weekly or longer basis. And a roomer is defined within the zoning code as a lodger or boarder occupying a rented room in a private home or a rooming house. And finally, the last two uses that are permitted within the code that allow for lodging is a hotel and a motel. A hotel is a building or portion thereof containing six or more rooms that are rented or hired out to be occupied, or which are occupied for sleeping purposes for compensation, and a motel is a building or buildings detached or in connected units, or designed as a single structure, the units of which are used as individual sleeping or dwelling units, each having its own private toilet facilities, and may or may not have its own kitchen facilities entered as a design primarily for the accommodation of transient travelers. I just want to make a quick note that the guest house does not mention compensation, and each of these other uses do mention that within their definition. The complete appellate statement is included in your packet before you, but just real quick, in short, the appellate disagrees with the Board's interpretation of a guest house, the definition of a guest house, since receiving compensation for guests that stay in the guest house is not specifically prohibited within the definition. When considering the merits of an appeal, no additional public testimony or information shall be taken or considered by the council. After considering the record and the reasons for the appeal, the council may take one or more of the following actions tonight. It may sustain the decision of the board in whole or in part, reverse the decision of the board in whole or in part, or remand the decision, and with additional comments to the board for further instructions. And with that, I'm available for questions.
Art? What's the square footage of the living area of the guest house?
The space is 1,000 square feet.
Okay, I think, John, do you have something you want?
Yeah, could you go back to the definitions of the boarding house? Keep going back. Keep going. Wow, now wait a minute.
There's one.
You had one in there that talked about, yeah, there it is. It appears to me in these definitions that you can go either way, as far as compensation. Is that not correct?
With a bed and breakfast or a boarding house, that you could either have, ask for compensation or not? Is that...
Well, yeah. This is not, what is, you had up there a definition of a boarder or a lodger, or... This is not...what is...you had up there a definition of a boarder or a lodger, or...the thing that I'm concerned about is, does it make...since it's not specifically in the rules that we have as far as zoning, because it is not in there one way or another, does that prohibit the activity?
Bill, you want to answer that?
The city zoning code is an exclusionary zoning code. Therefore, if a use is not specifically named as being permitted, then it's assumed not to be legally permissible. So because of the fact that the guesthouse does not specifically speak to compensation, the assumption is that compensation is not allowed in a guesthouse. Were these other uses, such as a boarding house or a bed and breakfast, specifically authorize the rental of the property or of that space for compensation?
Are they okay? Walter?
If I may, to Bill, in the appellate's letter to the Council asking to have this appeal, there's a statement made, quote, "The Board's primary argument against the application was that it is against city code to receive payment by guests staying in our guesthouse. This is not prohibited in the city's definition of guesthouse and is therefore permitted." If I understood John's question and your answer a second ago, that is not a true statement.
If I might, we probably would not share that opinion. The zoning code is an exclusionary code. Therefore, only uses that are named or defined are allowable uses. There are specific uses that relate to lodging for compensation in that district that use the term roomer or lodger or boarder. None of those terms are utilized in the guesthouse definition, and guest is undefined, so we do have to go to the common definition. And that's really the question that's before the Council tonight. Historically, staff has interpreted that a guesthouse is a not-for-compensation activity, but we don't have a large number of these. This is the first one we've had in 14 years. We've had, I think, five over the last 25 years. So it is not a common use that we encounter, but it has been the general belief by staff that because of the use of the term guests, because of no mention of compensation, and because there are other uses that specifically mention and refer to compensation using the term roomers and lodgers, that a guesthouse is just that, is for guests, friends, or family who may be staying, or servants, as the definition reads. There was a misunderstanding with Becky, who's been new in handling the application, that she didn't understand that difference. We do generally concur with the Board's interpretation and their decision, but certainly it is the Council's code, and the Council has the ability to interpret its code.
Thank you. Art?
Just a question, somewhere in the depths of the codes, is there any provision for how long a guest can be in a guesthouse?
That's not specifically noted within this definition. There are, in the other definitions, you can see that the bed and breakfast says, less than a weekly basis, boarding house is weekly or longer, but within the guesthouse, that is unclear.
In a guesthouse, I don't think there would be a limit. It says that it could be a servants' quarter, it could be, you know, the older kid living out in the back, you know, living in the guesthouse. I don't think it's a duration thing.
Other questions for Becky? Thank you, Becky. I would like to hear from the applicant. Nathaniel, Ely, would you like to come up, please?
Thanks for coming out this evening, I appreciate it. So I want to thank...
Just announce your name and your address, sir, please.
Certainly. My name's Nathaniel Ely, I live at 318 South Howard.
Okay.
So, again, thanks for coming out this evening, I appreciate it. I want to first thank the city staff, who have been helpful in working through this. And tonight, there's just probably just a few brief things I'd like to bring up. Really, I believe why we're here this evening is because we're talking about whether or not compensation can be received or not. That's the primary objection that we seem to receive. A secondary one was accessibility. And both of these, in my opinion, stem from a lack of knowledge of the code and/or interpreting it as exclusionary. I'm actually a building contractor, so I do work with the building department regularly. I do have a working understanding of the code, and today is the first day I've ever heard of it being an exclusionary code. My understanding is that common law, you know, the general law of the land, says that if something's not specifically excluded, it's permitted. And the building codes have, in my experience, always been interpreted that way. This is actually, in my opinion, a flip-flop from Bill. When I met with him last, he was encouraging me to appeal this as well, and so I'm very surprised tonight that he's defining the code in this manner. To address a couple of specific questions, Art, you asked about length of stay. The code, the city code does not address it. The IBC code does. It's under the transient living section. It talks about people lodging in transient dwellings, and the limit there is 30 days. So it is defined, it's just defined in the IBC. We see a lot of definitions that are in the international code that the city adheres to that cover a guesthouse and that cover the use that we intend to employ it for. They're just not specified in our city code. The guesthouse, as you see, has, you know, several things. We could use it for guests or servants. So by the way it's written, as absurd as it sounds, we could pass a contract to every guest in which they agree to be our servant and pay us to stay there. So if we want to go by the strict definition, then I think we needed to keep it a little bit more malleable, as it were. So if you have any questions for me, I'd love to answer them.
John, you have a question?
Yeah, Walter had his hand up first.
Walter?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm looking at the application for conditional and special use permit that is handwritten, filled out by hand. I presume, Mr. Ely, you did that?
That's correct.
In it, as far as I can tell, or can see, it never mentions compensation. It never mentions anything other than guesthouse, guest accommodation, residential use, residential use repeatedly. But a couple of things that I wanted to ask you about within that. One comment under number seven, criteria one, you state, "No different from surrounding housing." Is there any surrounding housing that has a guesthouse that charges people to stay there?
Under which section is that, Walter?
It's page two of four, item seven, and criteria one, "The proposed use will not endanger the public health or safety if located where proposed," et cetera.
Okay.
And the answer written in there says, "Residential use in residential area, no different from surrounding housing, will not pose any danger to public."
Yes.
And my question has to do with the "no different from surrounding housing" statement that is in there.
Certainly. That is specifically in response to posing any danger, so residential housing generally doesn't pose a danger. The surrounding housing is residential in character, and it includes, actually, majority rental properties, which are not conforming, however, they're there. There's a triplex, there's a duplex, there's a rental, and there's a rental in series from both sides of our house. And so none of those are posing any dangers, whether they're rented or occupied.
Those are single-family homes that are rented...
They're single-family homes that are rented out for compensation.
Is the principal structure on the property?
Yes, sir.
Okay, if I may.
Great, go ahead.
In criteria five, it states, "The character of the proposed use, if developed according to the plan submitted, will be in harmony with the area in which it is to be located." If there are no for-compensation guesthouses in the area in which it is located, I would wonder if that is in harmony, to put one in there.
Well, it's an allowed use in the code, you know, based on the seven criteria, so is it an endangerment? Is it, you know, a public benefit? I mean, those are the questions that we're really looking at here tonight. There's seven criteria, and compensation is not one of them.
Thank you.
Arthur, you had something, your hand up, didn't you? John, did you have something?
No, I'm still, quite frankly, still hung up on the definition...
Well, a question specifically for Mr. Ely, that's why I asked. You can go ahead and sit down. Thank you. And we'll take the conversation amongst the Council here. John, you want to go...Rod?
Actually, Bill, Bill has something to do with it.
Bill?
If I might, Nathaniel made the mention regarding the exclusionary zoning code.
Bill, can I get you to speak up just a little bit for me tonight?
Mr. Ely asked about the differences between the building code and the zoning code, and those are really two different and distinct ordinances that have two different applications. As you look at the zoning code, under section 11-5 of the zoning code, under authorized uses, it specifically states, "This zoning code is an exclusive zoning ordinance wherein the stated uses are the only uses which are permitted in each zoning district. Those uses not listed as permitted or conditionally permitted are not authorized." The question, "Whether a specific use is encompassed by a listed use shall be subject to the zoning administrator or designee's reasonable discretion," and it goes on so forth about further, "When there are resulting changes in technology, business, or practice, or lifestyle, a use has not been mentioned in the zoning code, the zoning administrator or designee may permit such use if it is clear that the use is comparable to listed uses for a particular zoning district." So it is clear that the zoning code is an exclusionary zoning code, so if a use is not specifically named, it's viewed as not being permissible under the zoning district.
Walter?
Thank you, Mayor. And to Bill, again, if I may, and the Board of Adjustment's denial of the CUP was based upon, in every case, the proposed use is not authorized under the definitions of the zoning ordinance as an accessory to a, single-family dwelling. So that...my question to you is, that fits under the preamble to this particular ordinance?
Correct, if I may. The Board, in a position of determining that the use, as described by the applicant at the hearing, was not permissible, in their opinion, could not really render a specific finding on each of those criteria, but merely to restate that they felt that that was not a permissible use under the zoning code. And so that is how they responded to those individual criteria.
I don't have a question, per se. Just a comment or two, is that this seems to look into the future a little bit toward the completion, almost, of an accessory dwelling unit portion of the zoning code. But where we run across a little bit of a sideways issue on it is that at 1,000 square feet, it would be more than what is being contemplated in this future code. And unfortunately, what we have, much as I like the idea of being able to provide additional housing in town and work towards a little more densification, it's not the way the law is written right now. And so it might be something that is just a little bit ahead of its time, and with some thought can come back after the accessory dwelling unit is complete. Because I like the idea, but we're sideways on what's allowed by the code and what isn't here.
You're talking about the accessory dwelling unit ordinance that's being worked through P and Z?
Yeah, it's at the cusp of being approved.
Nothing hasn't got here.
Yep. So it seems to look forward to that, but it's not here yet.
Well, and I must remind the Council that we can't think forward of something that may or may not happen.
Exactly.
We do not have any kind of reading on, so thank you for bringing that up, Art, but that's something. I warned the Council not to look at that, because there is nothing in concrete on that yet.
Wayne?
Well, even with all of Bill's explanation as to why you can't charge for it, we go back to one of the comments at the Board of Adjustment hearing that states that, because under Moscow Code, if it's not specifically permitted, then it's prohibited, so the use proposed by this applicant is, in fact, prohibited by the zoning code. I really have a hard time wrapping myself around that statement, even with everything that you've said, Bill, because it identifies in zoning whether you can have a boarding house, or whether you can have a guesthouse. I see so many things that are out there that people haven't thought about, and if they're not specifically mentioned by right, then they don't have a right to do that. Then it's not allowed, it's prohibited. And I find that hard to believe, that our code is written that if we don't specifically say you can do it, then you can't. That's the difficulty I'm having with this.
Dan?
Yeah, I got to disagree with you, Wayne, though, that that's what, you know, has kind of been hammered into us since we started on the Council, is that, you know, that it's an exclusionary code. And as Bill said, if it's not allowed in the code, then it's prohibited. That's why there are the variances in the conditional use permits that we have out there that people have to apply for, or the potential changes in ordinance, whatever that may be. You know, this is something that, you know, I would like to see a guy be able to do, but I don't see us able to. I think we're going to have to uphold the Board's decision.
Like, if I may, I don't disagree with you, Dan. I'm just stating that I just don't like it.
All right, yeah. John?
Well, I agree with you, Wayne. I don't know whether what Bill spoke to is a law, or whether it's a policy, or just exactly what it is. The whole thing seems to me to be quite nebulous. And since it does appear that way, I would like to see us go ahead with and overturn this decision by the Board and allow these people to do what they're going to do. And the reason being that I still don't know whether are we legally bound to do this, or is this a policy that the city has come up with, and all of a sudden, we have to stick by a policy, or whether there's some legal justification for it.
Let's go over to Gary, he had something. He was...
I defer to Bill, and then I'll fill in after he's done.
So the fact that the city zoning code is exclusionary code is city code, so it is the city's law, and it's been adopted by the Council as being how the zoning code to be administered. And virtually all Euclidean zoning codes, the Euclidean zoning codes are those zoning codes that regulate land uses specifically, as compared to form-based code, that have less of a use regulation component and more of a structural building, massing, physical regulation to it. Pretty much all Euclidean codes are going to be exclusionary, so if a use is not named as a permitted use, it's generally not an allowable use in that zoning district. What has been policy has been the zoning administrator's interpretation of what a guesthouse means, and what a guest means, and how that term and that definition relates to the other defined uses, such as a boarding house or bed and breakfast, that uses the terms of compensation and roomers and lodgers. So somebody has to read the words and has to decide what those words mean in application, and so that's the zoning administrator's job, to interpret the code. So that is really, that's the one thing that is somewhat nebulous. It's not specifically defined in the guesthouse. It doesn't specifically say that no compensation can be taken. But as you read the code as a whole, and look at the other comparable uses in that district, or even throughout the code, that address lodging and whether compensation should be taken or not, and looking at the terms that are utilized as roomer or lodger and boarder, those are clearly a compensation situation. The guesthouse, where it talks about guests and/or servants' quarters, is the area that has been historically interpreted to be not for compensation, and that's been the zoning administrator's decision. That is the area that is maybe not as precise as language could be, and if the Council has a different interpretation about what those words mean, the Council can interpret its code, and you can, but it would be based upon that decision. The fact that the code is exclusionary is law in the city, and so that is how the uses are regulated currently under the code in its current form. So that would be my response, as far as what areas are fairly firm in the code, where there is room for interpretation, and if Gary has anything to add to that.
Do you want to add to that, Gary?
I think, without going deeply into zoning ordinances, the form-based code, which is what we don't have, is a looser code than the Euclidean code, which essentially has to be exclusionary, because when you buy a piece of property within a certain zoning district, most people want to know what the neighbors can do, or what they can do within that zoning district. So by its very nature, it has to be exclusionary, because you can't list everything out, every possibility that someone might want to put in somewhere. And Bill's exactly right. The part of the interpretation that's up to you tonight, and the part that's actually being appealed, is the zoning administrator's decision on whether a guesthouse, you can receive compensation for people staying in a guesthouse. As Bill indicated, you've got, your boarding house has a certain definition, hotels have a definition about receiving compensation, so on and so forth. So if, and... compensation, so on and so forth. So if, and the code is not as clear, as specific on guest houses as it is on some other areas. So if the council wants to decide that they disagree with the zoning administrator's decision and said, you know, we're not going to say that you can receive no compensation for a guest house, you can certainly find that and overturn the zoning administrator's decision. If that is the case, the resultant action staff will take is then come back to you with a revision to the code and say, okay, you made this decision that guest houses can receive some compensation. How much? How tight do you want to make this definition? So, and that's just the way, whether you're talking statutory law, common law, what we lawyers call stare decisis or decisions made by a court, that's all molded into what you can and can't do. And they're all equally as binding. But what your job tonight is to decide whether or not you agree with the zoning administrator's decision.
Rod, you got something you might have?
Just adding one thing. When you're doing statutory interpretation, you have to give meaning to the words that are there. And if something's not there, you also got to think that the people knew what they were doing when they drafted or constructed that ordinance. So it was there for a reason. And how you get there is you look at the other parts in the ordinance that do talk about for compensation, and it specifically talks about it. Here, it doesn't. So you're going to have to, you know, one way to interpret is that they did that on purpose.
Walter?
As I don't like to say, but do say, I'm one of those up here that has the least experience in planning and zoning. But I can certainly understand when you take it to an extreme, that if I buy a property in a city, R1, R2, and it doesn't say I can have a pig farm in my backyard, then I want that code, at least for my neighbor, to say, you cannot have a pig farm even if it's not in the code. So, I mean, that's a far cry from a guest house. I understand that. But I think, to me, it makes the point that it is exclusionary, and I think all of us would want it to be, so that we would have some expectation of what can occur in our neighborhoods.
Wayne?
Bill, when you were talking about, and you were defining the word guest, you need to remember that as, Becky was showing the definitions up there, it also defined guest as a resident of a hotel or motel who is getting charged. There is compensation being paid by that particular guest.
To a hotel, not to a guest house.
But it's the definition of guest.
You know, and I think, and I don't know if it's working backwards or not, but, you know, if something like this, if we wanted something like this to happen, I would rather see us work on the language before allowing it. You know, and I don't know if it's allow it, then fix the language, or fix the language, then allow it. I don't know how the process would be, and maybe somebody at the big boy table over there can tell us.
Bill, you want to take that one on?
Bill? Well, I think the only way the council can allow it is to interpret the definition in a fashion that allows the use as the applicant has described they wish to conduct it. And then you can provide staff direction to clarify the language, to bring an amendment to the council for your consideration, to specifically allow the activity and remove the ambiguity in the language today. But I think you can't craft language from the dais, but you can interpret it if you wish to. If you feel that it supports the use as described, then I'd say you would have to provide a reasoning and a basis for the decision that you feel the definition includes a use as described. And then you would direct staff to prepare an amendment, I would recommend, so that we don't have to have this discussion five years from now, when it's somebody else here and it's a new council, and having to try to understand whether compensation allowed. I mean, it's to everybody's benefit, the public and everybody to have clarity in the code. And so if there's ambiguity, and if you feel that the definition is not precise and there's ambiguity, and you feel that it is interpreted in a different fashion, then as the Board decided, and I know Gary mentioned the zoning administrator, I actually haven't rendered a decision. It was the Board that's made this decision. I concur with it. But if you wish to change that, I think you would need to make sure that you could come to the conclusion that it's permissible under the definition as constructed today, but direct staff to provide clarifications.
Walter?
Mr. Mayor, I certainly appreciate the applicant's initiative and his interest and reasons for wanting to do this, but I cannot see it. I'm going to have to make a motion to sustain the decision of Board of Adjustment.
No, I'll have to second.
Okay, we got a motion by Walter and a second by Dan to sustain what the Board of Adjustment did.
You, and we'll have it up for discussion. Do you have a point? Yeah, I was going to make one other point about unintended consequences here, because I could see if redefining the term guest and guest house, we suddenly start treading into accessory dwelling unit, and we will wind up with conflicting zoning ordinance language between those two uses. And which one do you want to fall under? And you wind up with a real wormhole of definitions that you go down, because at 1,000 square feet, this particular facility would not meet an accessory dwelling unit. So what's to stop people from saying, well, I'm going to construct a guest house instead? And then we wind up with conflicting definitions there. So, much as I like this, I think I agree, but would suggest that maybe come back after we do some more ordinance languages with planning and zoning, and try it again, and just go in with the newly created ordinances relative to that, relative to accessory dwellings.
Other discussion before I take a roll here? Okay, the vote is to uphold what the Board of Adjustment did. We'll start with you, Art.
Aye.
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 No. Okay, we had four ayes and one against, so it stands that we will uphold the Board of Adjustment's decision on the conditionally used permit.
Mayor?
Thank you very much. Wayne?
I don't think we need to do this as a motion, but I would like to see council direct staff to go back in and rework this and come up with something that is a little more user-friendly and defines the ability of a guest house to charge if necessary, or if that's their desire.
Bill, you want to?
If I might just give some clarification, is it the council's intent that you'd wish to see a legislative amendment to allow compensation in association with the guest house?
That's what I'm saying.
I'd almost want to see what comes from planning and zoning before we step in that.
Well, go to planning and zoning first.
Well, certainly we'd have to. Any legislative amendment would have to go through the Planning and Zoning Commission, but just trying to understand, we could certainly place this on Admin Committee to follow up, to receive any additional direction from the council, but I just wanted to understand what the direction would be.
Well, I'm kind of hearing mixed emotions on that bill, some for and some not. So, but if it goes through the channels, then it's going to be something that will come in front of the proper committees. It would go in front of planning and zoning, and they would either vote for it or against it, and then that would come in front of this board as well, this council as well. So, but I'm hearing mixed emotions on it.
Bill? I think, if I'm not mistaken, we've got two ways we can do this, as you indicated. We could just send it directly. The staff could work it up, bring it directly to admin. Admin can take a look at it and send it straight to council, and we could bypass planning and zoning. No?
That's not the way to do it.
No.
Gary?
Hang on a second, Bill. Gary had a point he wanted to make.
Well, Bill can explain the process, and you just can't bypass planning and zoning in a zoning issue. But if the direction of the council is you would like staff to take it to planning and zoning for their consideration, and have them make a recommendation without direction from the council that you want to see compensation for guest houses, allow them to mull over the issue and make a recommendation, I think that would be a preferred direction. Bill, would you agree?
Yeah, I was just going to clarify that legislative code amendments can either originate from the council directing Planning and Zoning Commission to look at this code amendment and make a recommendation of the council, or they can be initiated at the commission level independently by the commission as a recommendation of the council. I was just trying to understand whether there's consensus among the council about what direction, what that amendment would look like, what it is you wished to be permitted.
Well, kind of what I hear, what I'm hearing here, Bill, is that because there isn't a clear defined definition, that it would be nice to have some more wording in there, and that the fact that we do not have wording in there means you can't do it, is something that the council struggled with. And that makes complete, to me, that makes complete sense, and you may very well run into that. As somebody said over there, five or six years from now, you have a complete different set of council people, and you could run into the very same thing. And that's what I think I'm hearing from the council. Dan?
Yeah, and I guess the question would be, you know, if they recommend that it's, that it's, guest houses doesn't receive compensation, then that's explicit in the code. You know, if that's the way, you know, if that's the recommendation they come up with, that we get explicit rather than it's not said, so then it's not allowed. You know, let's say what's not allowed.
Yeah, if the council's desire-
Or it might go the other way, if that's what their recommendation is.
And that's what I was just trying to understand. If the intent was for the council to have it made more clear in the code that compensation isn't allowed, that's one direction. If it was to allow for compensation, that's obviously a different direction and a different discussion. If you'd just like to have the commission review the matter, see how it fits in consistency with other land uses, if compensation was going to be permitted, there's going to be a whole host of other duration of stay and other aspects that will have to be considered as part of that discussion. So I just was trying to get a better sense about what the council's direction was and what you would like the commission to look at, so.
Walter?
I'm hearing Wayne says he wants it to say compensation, and you're hearing me say I don't want it to say compensation. I hear Art saying, as a former chairman of the P&amp;Z, as late as just December 31 or January 6, P&amp;Z's working on something similar to this at this time. I don't know that we should get on this horse before he's got a saddle on him. My opinion would be that this should be clarified. It is up there a little bit about where the other codes talk about compensation for boarding houses, compensation for B&amp;Bs, hotels, compensation, et cetera. Guest houses doesn't say it. I think what, I think the one thing we're saying is, we'd like to clean it up in some fashion, and if that needs to fit within P&amp;Z's work on accessory dwelling, accessory, I can't even talk-
Accessory.
Accessory dwelling units, then I personally would like to see a more complete package brought back to us.
We could certainly incorporate it as part of the conversation, have the commission take a look at that.
Okay, we good? We're going to move on?
I think so.
We're good. We're going to move on to item 6, folks, which is a review of potential use of city property leased by Cadillac Jack. And Dwight will be doing the presentation.
you. We've been through it several times since 2005. Just across the road here, at the junction of West A Street, North Main, and Washington, where they converge, we have a small piece of property. And we have been renting this or leasing this to Cadillac Jacks or CJ's to use as parking, and for $50 a month. And we've typically gone two years at a time and renewed it, renewed the lease, and that lease has expired, is the end of February. And we were directed the last time to come back with a recommendation on more of a long-term or permanent use of this property. Parks and Recreation Commission took a look at this, and their recommendation was that the city divest itself of the property. And they based that on that it's not suitable for a park or other form of social gathering place, and that it's not suitable for green space. And it would be, because of its specific location and some adjacent businesses, that it might, it would likely be an overburdened some maintenance cost for the city. At one time, this was looked at as a possible park, small pocket park with some art features to it. Since that time, the Arts Commission, the Parks and Recreation Commission, and the Paradise Path Task Force have all stated that they do not think this is suitable for that type of use. And so we're basically back to square one. Staff's recommendation for this go-around is to renew the lease, but instead of having a termination point, leave it an ongoing lease with a clause in there with the 90-day, sorry, notification period where we can change our minds, or same thing with the applicant or the lease seller. And so with that, I've got a few slides here so you can see. This is how it is presently, and a little broader picture. You can see the highway, North Main, and A Street is just right about here, I believe. And some of the options that we talked about, plus, you know, you could go five years. There's other things we could do, too. At one time, we looked at some possible, just green space, fill in with the different kinds of shrubbery to beautify that a bit, run the curb. Right now, there's an entryway right here, but go ahead and run the curb and have angled parking for the public. And there was also the idea that we could actually pave that and create some parking inside. Right now, it's gravel. But this line right here is the CJ's property line, and they are not interested in using that in this kind of configuration. They don't want to give up the space. And their preference is that we renew the lease. And there's discussion, as you might recall, Bill Belknap's been working on an entryway beautification plan, and this could be possibly part of that. Right now, I mean, if you go down Washington, I mean, there are no trees through here, and so it's possible, there is one tree right here. But it's possible to do some planting along there. It would likely involve a retaining wall and some work to, so you could actually have trees in there that would, that it would sustain trees. But at the same time, whoops, once you go through that, then you have less area for any kind of parking. So you start back to the point where it would make more sense, if that was the case, to go ahead and fill that with something, some green or something of that nature. And then, as a street view, this is the parking area here. And so, as you can see, it's not very attractive in the manner that it's currently sits. So greenery could be planted here, work through that. On the eastern side of the road, it's actually very attractive, but they also have the space to do that, and it doesn't interfere with the parking that they have, because they're lots bigger. So you have a lot of options here to think about. Primarily, the decision is whether to lease, re-lease this or not. If we lease it, that gives us time and the opportunity to come up with other kinds of plans. Or you could make the decision tonight to do whatever else you would prefer. And with that, Phil is here, Phil Roderick, if you have some questions for him, and I'll be here, too.
Well, I'm going to turn it over to Council, Dwight. Thank you. Walter, this was on Public Works and Finance?
It was. It was brought to us as presented without the street view picture that's new tonight, or without, I don't think we had this picture that shows the lot lines planted in streets. And this is important, in a moment, a comment that I'd like to make.
Correct.
But what Dwight brought to us was five options, and the one thing that Public Works and Finance did was to request that the options, the first two options be to renew the lease with no expiration date, or to divest, the city divest itself of the property, and we did not give a priority to either one of those. We did ask him to go ahead and list the remaining three options that he had given to us in no particular order. So the Public Works Finance Committee leaned toward the lease at undetermined length of time or- of time, or the city divest itself, and with that, we threw the ball to the whole council to talk about it and decide what they wish to do. If I may, Mr. Mayor-
You can go ahead.
The slide that Dwight has up there, I asked that we get that, because a proposal came to us, I think by email, that if and when someday there's a bypass of the city of Moscow by US 95, and the city could recapture the grid system in this area and not have US 95 do that S curve, that retaining this property would allow us to put the grid streets back in. My belief, looking at this, and either Les or Bill or Dwight could speak to it, is that this property has no bearing on that. A Street remains platted and goes across the area adjacent to the corner club. I think the lines are slightly off. I don't think the north property line of A Street goes through the corner club. But, the point being made, that this property lies south of A Street, and gritting the system down there someday would not be impacted by any decision we make tonight. With that being said-
Ken? John?
Mr. Mayor, I spend time now with the planning and zoning, and the planning and zoning, we've, we've been discussing the possible extension of the downtown business district to the north. And this particular piece is right on the edge of that discussion. And, so, along with Walter, although I'm a little bit more, I would like to see us renew the lease with no particular expiration date, and let's find out what's gonna happen with the possible changing of the downtown business district. It, it may or may not change, but I would just assume, if we could, and we can, push this into the future, once that is done, and then if we need to make a decision on it, then we can, but right now, I would prefer to just continue with the lease as it is, with no expiration date.
Is that a motion?
Uh, no, I was chastised for making motions too early.
John, it can make a motion, it can always be second, there can be further discussion, so.
Art had something you wanted to comment on.
Yeah, I was just gonna say that-
I'll let other people make-
Divesting a city of property is a lengthy and involved process, and right now, with the stated council goals of beautification of both the city entrances and certain selected locations within town, I think buying some time through a long-term lease with a termination clause inserted in it would probably best serve this, and if you put up some greenery there, and, and as was seen in that one slide, can I give a little more scenery to that curve?
Wayne?
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion to renew the existing lease without a specific expiration date, including the current monetary and maintenance conditions, termination clause, and specified termination notice period.
I'll second that.
Okay, we got a motion by Wayne, and a second by John, to extend the lease without an expiration date, if I understood that right?
Yep.
Walter?
Wayne, staff had a proposed 90-day notice by either party to terminate the lease. I wanted to ask Dwight, if the night, if there's any magic to the 90 days, would 30 or 60 be a, it'd be, they'd be different numbers, would they be any better?
Um, I don't think so. I mean, things move slow enough that, I mean, I thought, I thought it was more along the lines of more help for the, for CJ's, because it would be, you know, some kind of a decision for their business, or that might impact their business, but otherwise, I don't know, 90 days just seemed to-
So that motion has the 90 days in it? Am I correct on that? Hang on, sir Gary.
Well, it, the motion doesn't, but-
Yeah, the concern I have is you're essentially granting a perpetual lease with a 90-day termination provision, which is not allowed. You can give a month-to-month lease that can be terminated upon 90 days' notice, which would be allowed, because you're measuring month-to-month. Typical municipal leases are anywhere up to 99 years, at least in municipal attorney's opinions, and I believe by Idaho Code, that that's the maximum a municipality can lease something for. So, you don't want to make it a perpetual lease.
So that option shouldn't have been given to us, then?
I wouldn't have recommended it, that doesn't mean that it wasn't, I mean, the way it was written was that, at least the intent, was that it's a continuing lease terminated upon 90 days' notice. Okay, but I would not, I would not call it a perpetual lease, which essentially is what the motion is for.
John?
I would amend the motion then, and add to it a month-by-month lease with 90-day termination.
That doesn't work.
Gary just said it did. Isn't that what you just said a minute ago?
Month-to-month works.
If you put the term in not to exceed 99 years-
Yeah, a recurring month-to-month lease.
But, if I may, but if it's month-to-month, how can you have a 90-day notice? It expires every 30 days.
Okay, if you prefer, you could say the lease to extend no longer than 99 years, and that would do the same thing, if you prefer that.
If I may, you're just having a problem with no length-
With no period, with no end on it.
Having a perpetual lease, I am having a problem with, yes.
You made the motion, sir. You want 99 months? Is that what you said?
No, years.
99 years.
Not to extend longer-
Then I will amend my motion, and I will make a new motion, state, or I'll withdraw my motion, and I'll make a new motion.
We have to vote on it? We can't withdraw on this?
It's a body's motion now.
Long as you get-
I can withdraw it as long as the second agrees.
Hang on, sir, Wayne, I want to get some advice here from the attorney. What'd you say, Rod?
It's the body's motion, but if he moves to withdraw it, and the second does it, then it can be withdrawn.
You're okay with him withdrawing it, John?
Whatever.
Say yes.
Pardon me?
Say yes.
Yes.
Okay, now-
Mayor, I'll make a motion that we renew the existing lease with a expiration date not to exceed 99 years, including the current monetary and maintenance conditions, and a termination clause with a specified termination period of 90 days.
We got a motion.
I'll second it.
Art's second it. John, we'll start with you.
No, Mr. I have a question on another, another item to do with this, if I may.
Okay, does that have to do with the motion, or is it-
Has to do with, has to do with the property.
Okay, all right.
Can you go back to the street view? Thank you. The comment was made by Dwight that if, if street trees were to be put along Washington from the wooden structure down to the red car, there would need to be some form of retaining wall, because that parking lot, you can't tell it from here, drops off a couple of feet, two and a half feet from the level of the sidewalk. So to put trees along there would need some small retaining wall to hold the dirt up and the trees up. I would not have a problem with trees, I would have a lot of problem with bushes in on that property anywhere, because it does sit between, Dwight was, was kind, it sits between two bars. And I, I don't think it would be a safe place to have, you know, large shrubs or bushes or anything, but trees such as those you see over on Main Street, I think, could, could make this look better than it does now. My question to anyone that knows the answer is that if trees were put there with some retaining wall setback, would you lose parking spaces, or a large number of the parking spaces that gravel lot is able to accommodate at the present time?
Billy, you want to take a shot at this?
Well, I don't know that I have a specific answer to that question. Certainly, vehicles do park up on the bank, I mean, I observe cars pulling up on the bank, but that's actually in the, in the state right-of-way. The state right-of-way appears to vary from 18 feet to 15 feet or so from face of curb to the right-of-way line, the, and it's a six-foot sidewalk, so you have anywhere from seven, eight to 12 feet behind the walk, that's actually state right-of-way, and not even the property that we're leasing under this agreement. So, if you were to keep, retain, put the retaining wall and keep the tree plantings within the right-of-way, which would get you the 12 feet off of the edge of the traveled way, as is required under ITD for clear space, then you could place them within the right-of-way that would not impact the actual property that is being leased. Now, it's not to say that people aren't parking like the red vehicle in a combination of this property and the right-of-way, but they really don't necessarily have that right to use the right-of-way anyhow, other than it's just unregulated space right now.
Okay, I, I'm not gonna attempt to change the motion. I, for one, would, would like to see staff investigate the possibility of some street trees along there, but I'm not gonna change the motion.
Okay, we're all set to vote? John, we'll start with you.
Aye.
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 Okay, it's five to zip, and then pass this.
Thank you.
A 99-year lease with the 90-day clause in it for either party to-
Up to nine.
Up to 90 days. Very good, we'll move on then. Okay, number seven. Moscow City Code Title VII, Chapter IX, Proposed Revisions Regarding Water Supply Cross Connections. Ty Thompson, is he here somewhere? We'd like to-
He's hiding back there.
He's back there somewhere.
Wake him up, he's usually waiting.
Come on up, Ty.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, thank you. You have in front of you those in the packet, the ordinance with the specific, the specifics of the proposal, the proposed changes, and also an explanation of those proposed changes. I'm going to follow that explanation of proposed changes page, as it's a little bit easier to, to follow along with, I believe. I kind of, I'll kind of start with just the reasons, kind of what the, the changes that we're, we're making here. To start with, as you can see in Section 9.2, are just definitions, a lot of that is just cleaning it up, adds a few definitions, I think those all fairly well speak for themselves. Next, we just had a realignment, reorganization of some of the code, moving sections here or there with little actual change.
Mr. Mayor, if I may ask, Ty, not everybody watching TV has a clue what you're talking about.
That's right.
I know we all do.
The viewers.
A short, a short paragraph of what the intent of this ordinance is, before you talk about changes to it, please.
Sure. I'll go ahead and start with what cross connection is, I think that's probably the best place to start. It's any actual or potential connection or piping through which it's possible to introduce any contaminants or anything other than potable water that is intended to flow through our potable water system. That can happen by a process known as backflow, which is where water or anything else that it carries could flow in the wrong direction, thus bringing any possible contaminants into our, into the public water supply.
And the intent of this ordinance is to prevent that?
That's correct. And the changes that we're making are hoping to make that more effective, really. I've been here for just over a year at this position, and I've learned a lot in the last year, and so that's why we're here, to try and, and be as effective as possible with my time and with other staff involved.
I want to add one thing to that, too, Ty, if I could, please, and the reason for these changes, because of the Idaho rules for public drinking, but-
That is a part of it, yeah, that was what, what kind of spurred this along, and we've, you know, while we were here, it was a, a chance to, to make some other changes, like I said, that would, would clean it up and reorganize it, make it more, more user-friendly, and add some things that will, that will increase the effectiveness of the code and of the cross connection control program. And the major ways that that will be more effective is, is to increase communication between us, the water purveyor, the customers that it affects, and the backflow assembly testers who are, you know, on the ground, actually making, doing the testing and inspection of the backflow assemblies that do protect the, the drinking water supply.
King?
Okay.
Go ahead and continue then, thank you.
Sure. So as I said, definitions, you know, those are pretty, pretty well self-explanatory. A lot of the language included in the definitions and some other where, other ways in our proposed changes were to align the language with, with the state code, just so that, for consistency. The last thing, like I said, was to improve the communication between the, the parties involved, and the, through the main changes here that I'll kind of highlight here in Section 9.4, Use of a Backflow Prevention Assembly. Section 9-4G, we're adding the requirement to the code that all installed backflow assemblies be tagged, tested, and a tag attached indicating that, that it was a passing test. This was something that is supported by the State of Idaho Division of Building Safety, by their plumbing program. 9-4, sorry, there's more there as well. There's another part there that we, you know, a little reorganization, and removed the section that, that regarding the rates established by the council. That is all established by the private contractors who do the testing. 9-4H does address that new requirement that you mentioned, Mr. Mayor, regarding, regarding failed assemblies, that they may, must be repaired, replaced, or isolated from the public drinking water system within 10 business days of a failed, of a failed test. Section 9-4I is again for communication. We don't know that it's failed until the backflow assembly tester lets us, as the water purveyor know. And the same with, with the customer who is, who has contracted them to do the testing. And so, that change to the provision requires notification within one business day of a failed test for a backflow assembly. I'll go back and add, forgive me, in Section 9.4G, we are asking that all assemblies be tagged every time that an assembly is test, tested, again, for, for information to be out there for the customers, for us, and for other backflow assembly testers. There have been times, this was requested by, by some of the customers who have had multiple testers come along and test the same assembly, often the next, or sometimes the next day, and they're receiving two bills for when it's not required, not necessary. If there are any questions from the council, I'd be happy to answer them.
Questions for Ty?
Oh, I've learned a lot of this from Ty in recent months, so.
Good chat, haven't we?
Walter?
One point I would, I would like to make for the public is that, that among the many other places, a lot of them commercial, that are required to have backflow prevention devices that are required to be tested, so do single-family residences, duplexes, private property that have underground irrigation systems. We would like to think that they all have backflow prevention devices on them, because they were installed and checked by the city at the time they were constructed, and if they do, they're required to be checked annually. Ty's department, the city can put you in, in touch with a list of people that are qualified to test them, and what does it run about to have one tested? Anywhere $75 maybe?
Between 40, between 40 and $70, depending on-
But they need to do it, they need to be tested, they need to be approved, they need to be tagged that they have been tested, so that's one point of this. With that, Mr. Mayor, I'd make a, a motion that we approve the ordinance on the suspension of the rules requiring three complete and separate readings, and that it be read by title and published by somebody.
I'll second that.
Hey, Walter made a motion to approve the ordinance, and to sustain the three readings, separate readings, or avoid the three separate readings, and Dan seconded that motion. Any conversation before we ask for a roll on this? Hey, Art, we'll start with you.
Aye.
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 Mike, as this ordinance has passed, this is ordinance number 2014-303. This is ordinance number 2014-303, and I will read it. An ordinance of the city of Moscow, Idaho, a municipal corporation of the state of Idaho, providing for the amendment of Moscow City Code Title VII, Chapter Nine, providing for the updated and additional definitions, provided for bringing language in line with Idaho Administrative Procedures Act, providing for organizing Moscow City Code into clear and logical sections, providing for effective communication between a water purveyor, affected citizens, and backflow assembly testers in this city, providing that the provisions of this ordinance be deemed severable, and providing for this ordinance to be in full force and effective from the date of this passage, approval and publication according to law, 332014. Thank you, Ty. Okay. We'll move on to number eight, which is Parks, Project Cost Forecast by Dwight Curtis. Dwight, you have the floor, sir.
All right. Well, thank you. Okay. Well, thank you for having me. As part of the long-range development and financial planning process, the Parks and Recreation Department developed a Park Capital Projects Cost Forecast Model, and this is meant as a general guide. It's a fluid document, and it's for the development of the new parks. We have several undeveloped properties, and it's also for capital reinvestments of already existing parks. The priorities and costs are estimates, and we will annually update this forecast as the conditions and cost changes, and we would fully expect them to. For instance, an unexpected funding source could cause the city to decide to develop something that they hadn't planned to, or not having the funding might move something back on the scale or on the schedule because we didn't have the funding to handle it. So, or new plans can come up. For example, there was some concern that we didn't have a lot of plans scheduled for Paradise Path, extensions and expansions, and the reason for that is that we don't have any concrete plans at the moment. We have some long-range conceptuals, but not enough to put together a financial forecast for that. So as Paradise Path Task Force works on that sort of thing, and they come up with new extensions and whatever, we will have those prioritized with the funding estimates and add them to the forecast. So, and this was reviewed by the Parks and Recreation Commission and also the Public Works Finance Committee last week. I'll go through my little slide here, my little slide presentation. Primarily, I mean, this is a forecast. It's not the actual plan of what is going to happen. It's just going to continue to change. You could change it tonight. I mean, it just changes, it can change that fast. But the primary thing that you're looking for is what kind of costs are looming out there, and how do we plan to come up with those kind of funding to take care of our development needs? There are some costs that we're going to have to do, you know, for our reinvestments. So let's say there's a roof that needs to be replaced or something of that nature. Those are things you have to do. The development of a new park, for example, could be pushed back if needed. So it's just what we need to do our long-range planning. When we set this up, you have assumptions, and that's general costs for different kinds of things that would go into the development of a park or reinvestments. Any place, anything from, as you can see, from a certain-sized shelter to restrooms to fencing, benches, et cetera. And as you go across the chart, you can see the different parks that we presently have, and based on some of the assumptions that we figure are going to be needed, we just added them in for the park and then came up with the tally of what those would cost. This is not a dated item yet. This is just what it would cost.
Excuse me, Dwight, could I get a clarification on that chart?
Yes.
You said East Gate. Is that the far southeast section, or is that...
Triangle Park.
One on Park Drive?
Triangle, yeah, Park Drive.
Okay. And you have $90,900 for, is that playground equipment?
Yes.
We just replaced it.
Yes. Like I said, this is not a, this is not a dated...
Right. Thank you.
Deal. It's just what it would cost, and you'll see that when we get into the dates. Here's some more assumptions, and sorry, the writing's so small, but there's just a lot of information to try to get in there, but you can see, these are properties that are not presently developed, and so you can see the cost is a little bit higher to develop new parks. And we still have the assumptions. Those assumptions, we know will all, they all continue to change, you know, prices continue to increase, and each year we will change these as they are needed. And then when you get into the actual forecast, I went out to, I believe, 2034. We were actually asked to go out, I believe, 10 years, but just the way it falls, it didn't make sense for me to stop at that point, so I went out to 2034. As you can see here, 2015, Lena, what is, we have Lena Whitmore Park, has some things that have to be done, and you have to go back to the assumptions page to see what those are, but here's Mountain View Park. These are the things that would be going into the budget that we're preparing right now for fiscal year 15. And this here for Mountain View Park, for example, includes funding for the horseshoe pitching complex that we had run through the council, what, a year ago or so?
Do you remember what portion of that $181,000 is horseshoes?
$150,000. And that does not, none of these costs include any other sources, revenue sources that we have. So if you had a grant, for example, it wouldn't be reflected here. It's still going to cost what it's going to cost. So this is just to tell you...
All this is what it would cost to do this, replace it or build a new park, or whatever it is, we stick in a park, correct?
Yep. And, oops, wrong one. Okay. Writing's a little bit smaller, but I ran this one out to 2015, and you can see where other things had been entered into the plan. Some of these had to space out, just sometimes when you had a higher number one year, try to space that out a bit. Some of this is guesswork of when a particular property, let's say one that's, has not been developed yet, of when we might have access to that. Right now, that's the primary reason we can't develop some of these, is because we don't have access to them yet. So as the subdivisions, the construction moves their direction, the likelihood of having access and development possibilities increase. And to make your eyes go buggy, this, I can't even read it from here myself, this one goes out to 2030, and in 2022, you'll see that's where we have some funding for Paradise Path, and that is for major repairs. That is not, we're talking capital-type, not your general repairs that we do all the time. And like I said, too, with Paradise Path, as new plans come onboard, this would change to be re-prioritized based on what the different commissions would feel that that would need to, where it would fit. And in a nutshell, like I said, this is to be used as a guide. The priorities and conditions change, and it's to be updated annually. This coincides with the Parks and Recreation Master Plan and the park property development plans that are in there. And we also are working on a facilities capital project cost forecast, and that, right now, we're doing the facilities assessment study and hope to have that completed shortly, and we'll plug those numbers into what we already have for facilities, and we'll bring that back to you as well, but it'll follow the same general format, and the conditions would be the same, too. It just depends on your priorities and needs. Yes, sir.
Dwight, what did you use for the inflation factor? Did you stretch that out?
These, at the moment, have no inflation factors.
No. So you go out there to 2025 and...
And the reason for that is because the thing can just change so fast, it's just not worth dealing with that yet.
Walter, you, this was in Public Works and Finance.
It was, and we looked at it. Dwight, one recommendation I would make...
Yes, sir.
Would be in your listing of parks, if you want to group the first 19 together and the 20 through 29 together, that you at least put them in alphabetical order.
Sure.
I have tried to find a particular park to see what you're proposing for it, and it's a little tough to do, just a thought. And one comment, if I may, Mr. Mayor. I've almost gotten used to the fact that playground, public playground equipment costs $90,000. I've had a long time, I had trouble getting, understanding that. My belief is that part of it has to do with the fact it's got to be bulletproof, and second is that it's probably got a fair amount of liability insurance premium built into it because people get hurt on them. I'm still having trouble with a drinking fountain costing four grand, a trash can $500, and a bench $1,000, but then again, I think bulletproof comes into a lot of it. But you look at some of these numbers, and you get an idea of why we have undeveloped parks in the city of Moscow, it's just plain the sheer size of the dollars it takes to do one of these things.
Gary?
Thank you, and I want to thank Dwight and the Parks and Rec Commission for doing the work on this. This is one of the, I think we've got one other comprehensive plan that we need before we can bring to you our long-range financial plan. As Dwight indicated, these are current dollars, current amounts. As he indicated, it will change as funding opportunities come up, as priorities change, but we will be able to do, hopefully, the same analysis we did with sanitation, water, and sewer funds, so that come to you with some sort of funding plan, so you can look at the different priorities throughout the city that are supported by the general fund, and do the same sort of planning that we've done in water, sewer, and sanitation. So this is another step, and certainly want to thank Dwight's staff and the Parks and Rec Commission for the work they put in on both the Parks and Rec Master Plan and on this financial piece.
Okay. Dan?
I would move to be accept Dwight's report.
Okay. Dan made the most move. Walter's seconded. We'll start the roll with Art.
Aye.
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 Okay. We accepted your report, Dwight. Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you.
Okay. Moving on, we're going to go into reports, and we will go with Public Works and Finance, Walter. We'll start with you.
To my memory, everything that was on the agenda has been handled tonight. One other item that I've got to report on was I attended on February 20th over in Pullman City Hall, the Palouse Basin Aquifer Committee meeting, monthly meeting, and one thing that they're starting to work on is they're looking at a redesign of their logo. They've had this for as long as anybody can remember. It's not that easy to read, and they're looking to spend a few hundred dollars to get a consultant to help them come up with a more identifiable logo that will help them follow their communication plan to let the public know what PIBAC is doing on a regular basis. And with that, I don't have anything else, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Wayne, I'm going to go to you, Administrative Committee. Tom Lamar is back east at the NLC convention right now, so...
And as I recollect, everything on the admin, I think we covered everything, didn't we, John?
Yes, we did.
Okay. The only other thing I have is the Historical Preservation Commission met on the 27th, and a couple of highlights is, first of all, they're having some serious discussion about hosting the Idaho Historical Convention in Moscow next year in 2015, which would bring some money into the community. And then also, they are going to invite Earl Bennett to come to the next meeting to discuss his thoughts behind having some type of a historical archive within the city, working through the Leita County Historical Society.
Okay.
Thursday, there is another Palouse Knowledge Corridor meeting. It's a special workshop that is continuing on with their working forward towards putting the Be an Entrepreneur workshop in June, and they're in a fundraising mode right now, and they have raised over $31,000 in pledges at this time. So we'll be discussing what the city of Moscow might be able to do in the very near future.
Okay.
Art? Neither of my, well, none of the three committees I'm associated with has had a meeting since the last city council meeting, so there is nothing there to report. We will be hearing from the Paradise Path Task Force people and their quarterly report, I hope, at the next meeting, if the next council meeting isn't too long. They are working to publicize better the fundraising efforts associated with Blackbird Crossing Way Station out in front of the Northwest River Supply, and would like to seek more donations for that project to advance its construction timeframe. So Margaret will have more about that when she gives her report, I'm sure.
Okay. Art, Dan?
None of my committees have met since the last council meeting. All of mine are this week, so...
John?
Planning and zoning met, and we spent a lot of time discussing the ADU accessory dwelling unit proposal and fleshing it out and answering questions. They answered questions among themselves, and so that is moving along quite well. They also spent some time discussing the extension of the downtown business zone and how it might affect the view as you come into town, as far as trying to increase the, as you come down the hill, make it look a little bit nicer, and I think that that would be a real good thing to do, and the, we did not get to a parking issue, and that was saved. It was already 9:30 or whatever it was, so Bill had to go home. So we put that off till the next meeting, and my other two committees have not met.
Okay. I have one report that I want to have. As mayor, I met with the airport board last week, and several weeks ago, we had Tony Bean, the airport manager, do a presentation in front of the Chamber of Commerce about the runway alignment and the new possibilities for that to happen, and that's something, a project that's been worked on for the past several years, and it's coming a little bit closer, inching along, closer to fruition for our whole region, so that's kind of an exciting thing, and there'll be more of that to come in the near future. He's going to be over here with some more various meetings and different things, and so that's something that's pretty exciting as a region for us, so I'm looking forward to see how that develops. And with that, that is all I have. I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
You had it.
Okay. So moved in a second?
I'll second.
Aye from John?
Aye from John.
Aye.
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 This meeting is adjourned, folks. Thank you very much.